I think I can go ahead and start my remarks now. I just want to thank you all for... You're supposed to introduce me? Okay, I'm screwing this whole...
I had a contract, you know? And sign, steal, then deliver. Everything is... Forget everything. Anyway, I'd like to first of all welcome everyone here to the Preferred Cycling Center. We're so happy that Susan picked this. So if you have never been here before, you see what a fabulous facility this is. But the main reason tonight is the Town Hall. As a former teacher of 40 years, democracy only works when people are informed and they make informed decisions. This to me was the most important thing I would tell my students. Make sure you know what you're doing because that's the way the republic was set up, that we have our elected officials do policies and laws that represent our values, things that we stand for. So when Susan definitely asked about using this venue and if I would come and introduce her, it's... I thought it was a tremendous honor. I know we have 435 representatives in the House of Representatives, but in the last year, I don't think one out of the 435 could say they worked harder than Susan. And I know for a fact today, she had to work so hard to prepare for tonight, she actually had to go to the Sam Adams Brewery today. Oh, that was yesterday? Okay, I thought that was today where you're mentally preparing yourself. But I'm very, very proud to be the moderator tonight, where I'm going to read the questions. But first, I want to introduce to you your representative, Congresswoman Susan Wild, from this new, newly-created Seventh District. So...
Thank you, Phil. I couldn't have asked for a better introduction and to think that I always deprived you of that opportunity, I'm sorry. I'm glad that I didn't, or I'm glad that you made sure that I didn't. First, I just want to thank all of you for being here. Phil took the words out of my mouth. Democracy works best when it is a participatory democracy and when people know the issues, know where their representatives stand, and communicate with and inform their representatives about how they feel about things. And I feel very privileged and honored to be here with all of you. Whether you voted for me or you didn't vote for me, my job in Congress is to represent you to the best of my ability. And so the best way for me to know how my district feels about issues is exactly this: to have convenings of people who come in and talk to me and ask questions and make it clear what their positions on things are. You may not always like my votes, but I can tell you that I consider what all of you have to say. I try to be very, very reflective and deliberative about the things that I vote on. I have a tremendous legislative staff. I get a lot of information before I make decisions and before I make votes. And I... Most of all, what I always think about, as Phil mentioned there, 435 of us in Congress, but I only have one district. I have a little over 700,000 people whose opinions I care deeply about. So that's why we're here. So I'm going to start by just telling you a little bit about what we've been doing in the last six months, and then we're going to open it up to questions that are submitted by index card, and I encourage you all to ask the questions that you might have. So, as I just said, we're six months into this. I'm a little more than six months in because I got sworn in back in November by virtue of having won the special election for the old 15th district. So I have just a tiny bit of seniority over my fellow members, and that's kind of a nice thing when it comes to things like where my office is situated. It's just a little bit better than the rest of the freshmen. My question... When I'm in committees and on question... By the way, can the people in the back hear me? Okay, the gentleman with the glasses and the checked shirt, you can hear me? Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure of that. So, as I was just saying, one of the advantages to this little bit of seniority, especially because we have such a large freshman class, is that when I'm in committee hearings, and I'm going to talk to you about my committees in just a second, I actually get to ask questions at the beginning of the freshman class and not wait until the end, which is a really nice thing because every committee has a lot of members. The most important committee that I'm on, which I asked for and lobbied hard to get, was the Education and Labor Committee. I felt as though that was a committee that reflected what this district most needs and the values of this district. It's a place where we work on issues having to do not only with higher education, but also workforce development and making sure that we are encouraging students who might not want to be college-bound, who might not consider themselves to be college material, to go for some sort of higher education that will give them the credentials that they need in life so that they can then move forward and have a meaningful career that pays them well. And so my big focus has been on the education side, those things that I just mentioned. And then it's the education and labor side. So we also deal with issues having to do with work safety protections, right, to organize, of labor to organize, reporting requirements to OSHA, and issues that have to deal with pensions. The multi-employer pension crisis is a real one. Many of you may not know what that is, but those who do are feeling it, and it's a problem that we're trying to solve on the Education and Labor Committee. So, and we also have jurisdiction over some health issues, primarily those that arise from employer-provided health insurance. So that's kind of the jurisdiction of the committee that I'm... That my principal committee. I'm all... I was also asked to be on Foreign Affairs. My principal focus with Foreign Affairs has to do with things like keeping this country safe, making sure that our allies are protected, making sure that we don't... That diseases are not allowed. I'm on a subcommittee that deals directly with global health, and we all know from the Ebola crisis that there were incidents of Ebola actually being brought into this country. So although we may think of Foreign Affairs as very much removed from us here in the Seventh District, the work that I am doing very much has to do with issues that matter to all of us in this country, I believe. And then finally, I'm on the Ethics Committee, which is an internal committee dealing with ethical situations that may arise among members of Congress or their staffs. And all... Everything that happens in that committee is confidential, and I'm not supposed to talk about it, so I won't. And I... So I want to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we've specifically been working on, and I am going to take a look at my note card because there's been so much just in six months that I want to make sure that I don't... That I don't leave anything out. But in broad strokes, you know, there's really so much work to be done. We know the things that we have to work on. We know that healthcare is one of the most pressing concerns in this country today. We know that taking care of our seniors and protecting Medicare and Social Security is paramount for many people in this district. We've worked on issues having to do, and I will tell you, on a very, very bipartisan basis, we're working on solutions to the opioid epidemic, which has hit... Pennsylvania is the third hardest-hit state in the country when it comes to the opioid epidemic. I'm proud to be a member of the bipartisan task force on the opioid addiction problem. We've spent a lot of time listening to experts about solutions to that problem, and I think we all know that it's one that needs to be... Needs to be worked on. And finally, you know, one of the things I've heard about most from people, whether they're senior citizens, middle-aged, or younger, is the concern about leaving a good place for the next generation and the generations to come, whether it's your children, your grandchildren, or yourself. And that means dealing with issues like student loan debt. It means making sure that we have a safe and good climate. It means making sure that the cost of housing is affordable. It means making sure that we have sustainable jobs that will continue to support our future generations. So these, you know, these are all broad-stroke issues, but they're things that really pretty much focus me every single day. So you hear a lot of drama on cable news about things going on in committees that I'm not on, on judiciary and oversight and that kind of thing. And it's very interesting, maybe, but it's not what my principal focus is because what I've heard loud and clear from the Seventh District is the people here are very much focused on issues that matter to them every single day, bread-and-butter issues. I always say to people who don't know our district well that I see this as a microcosm of Middle America. This is a district almost... Excuse me, almost evenly made up of Democrats and Republicans. It's a district of people who expect their lawmakers to be dignified and to act civil and respectful and to treat people around them with respect. And to me, that is... That exemplifies much of this country. So a lot of what we hear on the news, a lot of what we might hear on the debate stage, I don't consider to be necessarily relevant to this district because I think our district is made up of everyday Americans who, by and large, are working families. Most of us in this district are dependent on our paychecks or our retirement, as the case may be. And, you know, there's not a lot of wealth in this district. So the things that I really try to focus hard on are the things that matter to those people. So those things have really shaped the way I approach my committee work on education and labor, and I've talked to you a little bit about some of the things that we've worked on there. I also want to highlight a few of the bills that I've worked on and that I've co-sponsored. One that I'm particularly proud of having a piece of is the Stronger Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act. It's... It included an amendment that I co-sponsored with a Republican from Pennsylvania, Glenn Thompson, which increases reporting requirements of child abuse and charges specific providers and members of... People who may enter a child's life with reporting requirements, and I think that's very important. We've also worked very, very hard, and this is in keeping with a campaign promise that I and a number of other people made, to protect people with pre-existing conditions. I have heard more on this issue from people across our district than any other issue. People with diabetes, people with cancer, people with issues and medical conditions that cause them great concern about whether they will continue to be covered under their health insurance and whether their premiums are going to go up because of their pre-existing condition. And we recently passed the Protect People With Pre-existing Conditions Act, and I'm really kind of excited about an amendment that I offered to that bill, which provided that this administration and any future administration, meaning the executive branch, cannot take any action that would have the result of raising premiums on people with pre-existing conditions. So one of the reasons I'm so excited about it is because after I worked on this amendment and talked to a lot of my colleagues in Congress about it, I was actually able to get 78 Republicans to vote for that amendment that we passed. And that... Thank you. That, to me, was... That, to me, was a real measure of success. That was... That's the literal working across the aisle and talking to your colleagues that needs to be done and that we need to see more of in Congress, and I really, truly believe that. And so that's why I was so excited about that moment when the votes came in and we saw that it had gotten such broad bipartisan support. I also introduced my own bill to fix a glitch under the Affordable Care Act. We called it Family Glitch. A lot of people were not able to extend their employer-provided health insurance to their families because of a glitch in the ACA. My amendment fixed that. It's a really... It doesn't necessarily apply to a lot of people. It was a small fix to what could be a big problem for a lot of people who were not able to actually extend their employer-provided health insurance to their families. And then we recently have been going through appropriations, otherwise known as money, talking about money and funding different programs. You may have seen in the newspaper that we recently were able to bring $300 million to the Social Security Administration for the purpose of reducing the waiting time for people seeking disability hearings. This is another issue that I heard about lots, not only since I've been in Congress, but when I was practicing law before I got to Congress, I encountered people on a regular basis who had become disabled on their job and were waiting in excess of two years to get a hearing for social security disability, and yet they were unable to work. And that is unconscionable, and the reason for it, and it's a crisis across the country, the reason for it is that the Social Security Administration was simply underfunded to handle those disability claims. And I'm not suggesting, for those of you who might ask, is every disability claim warranted? No, no. The whole point of the system is to have a hearing and present medical evidence about whether or not a disability warrants compensation. So I think it's really important to get rid of those long wait times. We were able... Also able to bring some funding for research at Lehigh University and to Penn State Lehigh Valley for some of their programs. We were able to get some funding for programs for workforce development, which, as I come back to the district on a regular basis and meet with a number of our employers and manufacturers, the number-one problem that I hear is they've got jobs that they cannot fill, which, you know, this is a long way from where we were a decade ago when we were talking about unemployment. We're now in a situation where we have almost full employment, which is great. The problem is that we've got manufacturers who are ready to produce product and add to our GDP, and they don't have enough workers to actually fill all those jobs. So we really have... This goes back to something I said in the beginning: workforce development is a passion of mine, trying to get us to a point where we are encouraging more people to go into the STEM fields, to go into manufacturing, get people off this thinking that everybody has to have a four-year college education. And we would go a long way, by the way, of solving student loan debt going forward if we encourage more people to go into the manufacturing field. So that's something that I'd like to work on and have been working on. And finally, in our appropriations, we were also able to bring some money to the public school system to close the achievement gap that we've seen between our different school districts. So on climate, I want to just highlight a couple of things. I am on a climate change... I'm co-chair of a climate change task force that the New Dems has. The New Dems is a coalition of moderate Democrats who work very hard on what I call, and I don't know if this is the way they would describe themselves, market-driven solutions. So we are working on ways to solve the climate change crisis that will both respect labor and people who work in the fossil fuel industry, but at the same time will create solutions and get us towards more renewable energies and get us in the right direction. And I think it's incredibly important that we not trade environmental justice for economic justice and... Or the other way around and put people out of work in what we do. I don't think there's any question but that a lot of people are going to need to be transitioned to other forms of employment, but I think we have to be very respectful of the people who work in the fields that are going to be affected. And finally, I was a proud co-sponsor of H.R. 1, which was the Democracy Reform Bill. It's, I think, a landmark piece of legislation. I had a specific piece of that bill. I introduced a part of it that provides for early voting in federal elections across the country. We know here in Pennsylvania, we don't have such a thing as early voting. Lots of other states do, and lots of other states make it much easier to vote, and I think that's critical because working people often have a hard time getting to the ballot box, and, you know, to make it one day between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. or 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. makes it very difficult for people who have long commutes, people who have long workdays or alternative work schedules. So I think early voting is really something that we must do and make it easier for people to vote so that everybody's voices can be heard. So with that said, I want to... Before I turn it over to questions, I want to address one issue because it's been in the news constantly the last few days, and that is the humanitarian crisis at the border. I want to give you a little bit of background and context, talk about it a minute, and hopefully clear up any questions that you might have about what's going on. You may have heard that a number of my colleagues went to the border yesterday, a congressional delegation, when I've spoken with two of the members of that delegation today. The conditions are very, very bad and they're deteriorating, and it's something that causes me deep concern, and I've heard from many people in this district, Democrats, Republicans, and independents, who are extremely worried about the humanitarian crisis. Having said that, I believe that we can accomplish the goal of safe and secure borders and still act in a humane manner. I think that we owe that to human beings, and I think that that is something that we've always been respected as a country that... That we...
Battery.
Battery?
Maybe.
I'm loud, but I don't know. Well, there it goes. Okay. Somebody might want to be looking for a battery in the meantime. And so I have heard from people, as I said, constituents as well as fellow members of the delegation. I want to tell you what we've done in Congress because there's been a lot of media recently about the supplemental appropriations bill that was just passed. About two weeks ago, the House passed an appropriations bill that was specifically geared towards the humanitarian crisis, and it didn't have anything to do with anything other than the issues that we're seeing on the nightly news. I guess it's not just nightly, daily news. And that bill was sent over to the Senate for a vote, and rather than taking up the House bill, the Senate took up its own bill, which provided less than the House bill did. And then it was sent back to the House for a vote on that, rather than the Senate voting on our bill. So they sent it back over to the House, and what happens when that occurs is that first it has to go through the Rules Committee, which is a very complicated committee that I'm thankfully not on, that decides what bills get to the floor. And then once that happens, we vote on "the rule," quote-unquote. And the rule simply provide... If the rule passes, the bill goes up for a vote. That's all that it means. If the rule does not pass, it doesn't get put up for a vote. I did not... I voted no on the rule because I felt that the bill did not go far enough in terms of what... And that the House bill was preferable, and that the Senate bill did not provide enough. However, the rule did pass. I was one of a number of people who voted no, but more people voted yes than no. So the rule went ahead, we voted on the bill, and I then voted yes on the bill the day before we left for the July 4 recess. So why did I vote yes on a bill that I didn't even want to see get voted on at all? And that's what I want to tell you about. The reason was that if we didn't pass that supplemental appropriations bill that had been sent over to us by the Senate, we would have left for the recess without sending any supplemental appropriations to the border at all. And I thought that that was unconscionable. The reason I voted no on the rule was because I was prepared to work through the weekend and through the next week, including this week, along with a number of my colleagues, so that we could try to work with the Senate on a better, improved bill. But as I said, that rule did not pass, or the rule did pass, so we had to vote on the bill. So I hope that helps. It's kind of complicated. It takes you a while to learn all of these, and I'm happy to answer any questions afterwards about that particular thing, but I wanted you all to know, you know, what that was all about. So with that said, I think we're going to open it up for questions, and you get to... You get... Take it away, Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, we have a number of questions, so we're going to be here a while. First question. Let's see how she can handle these tough questions here. What's the plan for small businesses and job training?
Thank you. I am not a member of the Small Business Committee. I will tell you what some of my colleagues are. We've had some conversations about this, and the problem... What I have seen and what I've heard is the same problems that affect larger businesses. The Air Products and B. Bronns affect the small businesses only more so because they're generally paying lower rates, lower wages, and because we have almost full employment, it's harder for them to find employees. So you've probably seen help wanted signs almost everywhere you go, and I think what we have to do is make sure that we are building an economy that works for everybody, but that includes the small business people. So we really have to focus on how we help them through... And my office is equipped to help people navigate the Small Business Administration for loans and other types of assistance. So I don't know whether that answers the question. I hope it starts to answer it.
Well, this definitely is a question just for you. They want to know, what's your experience been like so far as a woman in Congress?
Well, first of all, it's not just for me because there were a whole lot of women elected on November 6. I have to tell you, my experience, for the most part, I don't think has been much different than the men in Congress. I'm happy to say that our numbers are now large enough that we have just as much of a voice as the men in Congress do. I think it's been a long time coming, and we have not yet achieved parity. I think we're still... Only 23% of Congress is female, but we're getting there. We've come a long way, and I personally have found that I am treated fairly and heard just as much as my colleagues are. But I tend not to be a shrinking violet, and I started my career as a litigator and at a time when there weren't a lot of women going to court, so I've had a lot of years to practice.
Okay, this is a great question for anybody that's in public office, but they want to know, especially at this crazy time, why would you want this job?
I get asked that question all the time, and I've always been the kind of person that likes to be involved. That sounds almost trite, given the nature of this job, but I would rather be involved in bringing about change or in helping people than sitting on the sidelines and just complaining about it. And honestly, I don't... I... There's a perception outside of Washington that the whole place is completely dysfunctional. That has not been my experience. I have found, as I said with that amendment to the healthcare bill, I have found remarkable success in working with people on the other side of the aisle. We don't always work with the administration, but we, you know, I think we... I personally am very respectful of the fact that we have three branches of government. I believe strongly in that concept of the equality of the three branches of government, and I recognize that not everybody sees things the same way, so maybe other people are more frustrated by it than I am, but I truly enjoy my job.
Okay, you kind of mentioned this earlier, but this question goes back to something you had said earlier. What can be done prior to 2020 to protect coverage for those with pre-existing conditions and to lower insurance premiums?
Well, the House has passed a bill that will protect people with pre-existing conditions, and included in that bill is an amendment to make sure that those people's premiums don't go up. You... This is an issue of great concern to many people. I will tell you, that bill that we passed in the House has not... Is not going to make it to the Senate floor. And my answer to that is probably nothing, given the statement of Senator McConnell that he intends not to put that bill on the Senate floor. And I regret to say that. It's very, very frustrating. It's something that I think that people... This is... Should not be a partisan issue. Protecting... I mean, pre-existing conditions affect people on both sides of the aisle. They affect young people, old people, and I don't understand why we are not fulfilling campaign promises that were made by Democrats and Republicans alike to protect people with pre-existing conditions.
Well, this is a great segue to this next question, then. How do we get both parties to have some kind of dialogue? How do we get both parties to have some kind of dialogue, to start talking across the aisle? Do you have any suggestions for that, they want to know?
I'm actually kind of encouraged by the recent election in November because I think we're seeing, at least among the freshman class, which is not just Democrats, I think we're seeing a lot of outreach. I think that having new faces is always good. I often say that getting to Congress is kind of like when you go to college, or camp, or a new school, and you're the, you're the new kid there and you don't know anybody, but a lot of the other people there don't know anybody either. And so you become friends just because you're in this common place. And so I guess what I'm saying is that I think that, that new blood is a good thing in terms of making people talk. And I can tell you that I make it my mission every single day when I get to the House floor to vote. The first thing I do after I've registered my first vote, and I often enter, there's a Democratic side and a Republican side, I often enter on the Republican side, mostly by virtue of the elevator that I prefer to take. But while I'm walking through there, I make a point of talking to people. And every, I have made my, one of my staff recently said, "You sure do know a lot of people in Congress," because we were in an elevator, and I addressed somebody by name. And the reason for that is because every single day... I don't know if I can talk over that. Is because every single day I make a point to introduce myself to somebody I haven't already met. And I think there are a lot of us who are doing that kind of thing.
I don't know. When I was in elementary school, we hear that, we went under our desks, or I did under our... Okay. Here's your next question, while the sirens are going up. What bills are right now in the House and what bills, especially you, are proposing to deal with these, the climate change that we're going through? By the way, did you see the ice storm in Mexico? Wow.
I saw that in Guadalajara, and yes, that was really, that was amazing. So as I mentioned before, I am a co-chair of the Climate Task Force in the New Dems, and I'm getting, I'm not good with the names of the bills, that's why I'm flipping through my notes. We have been working on a number of bills to reduce carbon emissions, which I think is critical. We have been, we have voted on a bill to rejoin, or to, not to rejoin, because that's not our jurisdiction, but to carry out the principles of the Paris Climate Accord, which I think is absolutely essential. And I have signed on to Congressman Deutsch's bill to create a carbon dividend trust fund to encourage market-driven innovation of clean energy technologies. And that's what I was talking about before. I think that if we, anytime we can do something that is market-driven, it's that much more likely to be successful. And it's something that I think more people can get behind because people don't really want to just have things imposed on them by the government. So if we can create climate solutions that are, have support in industry, which by the way, the Paris Accord did, most businesses and cities have continued to follow the principles of the Paris Accord, even though we have officially, that we've, the President has announced that we would withdraw. And finally, I'm also, I've supported the Bi-Cameral, Bi-Cameral meaning Senate and House, Climate Change Health Protection and Promotion Act. And that unfortunately is to protect, prepare our public health system for the effects of climate change, which we are already starting to see and will continue to see.
Will you oppose cuts to the international affairs budget?
Without more specificity, that's really hard to answer because appropriations are much more specific than just a broad category like foreign affairs or international affairs. So let me just answer that in terms of what I believe and my values and the way I think I would vote on issues of appropriations. I think our relationship with our allies is incredibly important. I think that we really need to bolster our relationship with our allies. I also think that we need to understand that a lot of the problems that we're seeing at the southern border are coming from countries that have typically received aid from us, and that we need to continue to work and support those countries so that they can raise their own standards of living, which would in turn cause fewer people to want to come here. I really believe that most people want to stay in their own country, and that when they come here, especially from at the southern border, it's largely the result of desperation or lack of economic opportunity, lack of food, gang violence, and that kind of thing. So I think we really need to work with those countries to make sure that we are taking the kinds of steps that would make people want to stay where they are.
Hey, we've got some tough questions for you tonight. Hold on, you have a bug on your back. I don't want you to get bit by anything here. Okay. What steps are being made in Congress to support Medicare and Social Security? Because we know both funds are in jeopardy.
Well, we, first of all, let me tell you that I am completely committed to preserving Medicare and Social Security. That is something that I promised on the campaign trail. I have, was endorsed by the Alliance for Retired Americans and the Committee to Preserve Medicare and Social Security, and I remain very committed to those issues. There are some fixes that we need to make sure that we take. We absolutely need to curb Medicare fraud. I actually think that's something that the federal government is doing a really good job of, and we're going to have to continue to do that to make sure that we don't have fraudulent billing and fraudulent claims under Medicare. And as far as Social Security goes, I suspect we're going to have to tweak the system as we move forward. And I don't know what the specific proposals are right now, but I'm going to carefully consider them. I know there's some proposals to raise the maximum income level at which you contribute to Social Security, which right now is somewhere around $123,000. And, you know, so that's one of the proposals, and there are some others that I think warrant some serious consideration. But the last thing I want to say on that issue is this, I don't consider those to be entitlements. People have paid their entire lives, they're out of every single paycheck into Social Security and Medicare. It is a promise that was made by the federal government, and we cannot be in the business of breaking those, that promise, especially to our senior citizens.
Well, Susan, you knew this question was coming tonight. Do you support beginning the impeachment process immediately?
Yeah, I noticed that, Phil. Are you going through them, looking for the hard questions? So, you know, this is a really tough issue. Let me, let me say first of all, that it would be the beginning of an impeachment inquiry, okay? Impeachment proceedings are, after an impeachment inquiry occurs. I, and I'm not trying to dodge this issue, that there, I am not on one of the committees that will make that decision ultimately. And I follow what they're doing, and I talk to them, and I hear the same news that all of you hear. I have a lot of concerns. My biggest concern is that I don't think that there is the respect being accorded to the legislative branch, Congress, as, by the executive branch, that it deserves. I believe we are co-equal branches of government, and I don't like, and I'm also, as you know or have heard tonight, I'm also a lawyer by training and spent a lot of years in a courtroom. And in my world, you didn't defy subpoenas, even if you didn't think it was an appropriate subpoena, you showed up, you had a lawyer, you had a lawyer argue with your case. You certainly did not just ignore it or not show up. If documents were subpoenaed, you produced those documents. You might have a lawyer who redacts them or crosses out portions that for whatever reason are inappropriate. So I have a lot of concern with the manner in which the administration is responding to the investigations that are being done by those committees. And I think that simple respect for a co-equal branch is in order here. I also have a lot of concerns about violations of the Monuments Clause. I have considerable concern about the administration, well, I shouldn't say the administration because that puts everybody in the same. I'm very concerned about the President's property interests and the fact that foreign diplomats are staying at Trump hotels and that kind of thing. I don't, every other president has removed himself from positions of conflict of interest, and it does concern me deeply that that has not occurred with this one.
Will you support mental health legislation for students?
I think that mental health issues start at a very young age. And when I've been visited in DC, and I have visited here, a number of people from the various school boards in our area. And what I'm hearing is that most of these schools, including East Penn, are sharing school psychologists or school counselors among the schools, that multiple schools are being serviced by the same person, which of course means fewer hours in any given school. We know that there are fewer kids coming home to an intact household. We know that both parents are working in the majority of households. We know that violence and, I'm sorry, my words are escaping me, that the kids are facing increasing pressures, especially kids who are home alone at a young age, whether it be by gangs, drugs, that kind of thing. We need, and then we've got a lot of tragedies happening within families themselves. And all of these, unfortunately, the teachers are very much being called upon to solve problems that they weren't put in the schools to solve. And I think it's unfair to the teachers, and I definitely think it's unfair to the students. But I don't think it's just about elementary schools and high schools. I think it goes beyond that. I think that mental health issues are the, are the most unrecognized illness in this country that has, a problem that just has not been dealt with. We pay a lot of lip service to mental health issues. We don't do a whole lot about it. But as I said in the beginning, I really believe these issues start at a very young age, and the sooner that we can tackle them, the better. And it will be better for the education of our children because the teachers will actually be able to teach instead of being counselors, and it will be better for us as a society if we do.
Next question. How will you support primary care, family medicine in underserved areas?
That's a really great question. So I recently spoke to a group of residents at Lehigh Valley Hospital, and I was very proud to tell them that I supported a bill that would add residency slots to the Medicare program. Now, what does that mean? We have a shortage of physicians in this country. And physicians, after they rack up the student loan debt that they have, that they graduate with FLOC to major regional health care centers, which we are very fortunate to have two of right here in our district. But rural areas are really lacking. So there are a few things that I think we need to do. One is that we need to, and I'm happy to say that I co-sponsored a bill out of the Education Committee, a forgiveness, I'm going to get the name wrong, for public service student loans, so that, for instance, if somebody goes into the public health field and then served a certain number of years in a certain area, that they would have forgiveness of all or part of their loan. We need to do more of that. But the other thing we need to do is expand the scope of practice for people like nurse practitioners and physician's assistants, because a lot of the problems that rural America and underserved areas have are issues, medical issues that can be dealt with by non-physicians, but specialized people like nurse practitioners and PAs. So we've got to also build up those schools and encourage people to apply to those, and also help with the tuition issues that affect those students.
Can you explain the importance of ensuring election access for our youth voters? And by the way, I'm going to throw a little commercial in here for Lehigh Valley. We have just gone, now the next time you vote, it's going to be paper ballot. So we will be, already, we've already come up, so hopefully that's going to help things.
So the question is, I understand it was election access for younger people?
Yes.
So the problem is that, so far anyway, we can't vote just by downloading an app on our phones. And I don't know how I feel, I think right now, given all the problems we have with election security, that's probably not the direction we want to go in, right, at least until we get better election security. So I commend you that we are going to paper ballots in Lehigh County. The main thing is that I think that we need to make polling places convenient for not just younger people, but all people. They need to be in places where people are. So if it's a college campus, we need, either need to be on the college campus or very near to the college campus. I think that we should be encouraging voter registration when seniors are in high school. That's something that, as far as I know, at this point, only one high school in the Lehigh Valley does. I think it's Liberty. And they're...
I know there's a few others.
Okay. Well, I've been corrected by Phil, but, but this, to me, is a critical issue. It's not a political issue. We are not telling students how they should register or what party affiliation they should have. All we're doing is educating them about a civic right that they have, and I would maintain a responsibility, but that, you know, is up to them. And I think that's where it starts, is making sure that high school seniors, most of whom have attained the age of 18 or soon will, as part of their graduation packet, get that information, get the forms, and are able to participate as early as possible.
Okay, Susan, we have a couple of people who have really said about the same kind of a question. With the diabetes problem in America, the cost of insulin has gone up and really has made it so difficult for many, many patients. How do you think we can deal with that?
It's outrageous. We've got, and I've talked to one or two of you in this audience about this in the past. I know I've talked to Danielle, who was featured on our social media, talking about her son. And since it was on social media, it gets okay for me to talk about it. She has a, really, she has a son with juvenile diabetes who has been taking insulin for years, and the cost of the insulin, can you hear me back there?
No.
I love technical problems. Is this, is this like...
I don't switch. It's better if you're on your...
Hang on. This is why I don't do PowerPoints, by the way.
Really? Yeah, really.
I hope they never are.
Who has a little pocket knife on?
Hopefully not.
Those of you who have one.
Oh, yeah. Is this a scum too true?
When I worked at school...
Okay, we have one. Thank you.
It's little for them.
Security, you did a great job.
It's a security risk.
There you go. Thank you. Why we have a temporary break in the action, though, I want to do another commercial. Thank you.
It's a little for them.
You do a great job, see?
It's a security risk.
There you go. Thank you. Why we have a temporary break in the action, though, I want to do another commercial. Next March, the census for 2020. Last year, Lehigh County was 30% unrepresented. Now, for every person that did not or was not counted, we lost $2,093. Now, we were undercounted for a number of reasons. A, we have an elderly population, they tended not to fill out their forms. B, rural areas tended not to fill out their forms. And we did have a population in center city of Allentown that tended not to. We are working very, very hard right now to make sure mail, email, phone is going to be very accessible this year. We are going to have a banner, we're going to be in parades. If you've gotten the Lehigh County newsletter, I hope soon, if you didn't, we put a section in there. It is very important. Please, spread the word. This commercial has been brought to you by Lehigh County.
Well done, well done. And by the way, did everybody notice that it stopped raining?
Yes.
It's amazing what we can accomplish with a little cooperation, right? Anyway, the question was about diabetes, and what we know about diabetes medications or insulin specifically, is that the formula has not changed over the last decade, but the price has more than tripled over the last decade. And this, this area in particular has a very high rate of diabetes. There is no reason, it's not, there's no reason for that increase in price, there's no new formulary, there's no new research, there's no, there's no justification for that, except the fact that it's a medication that people have to have to live on, and they can get away with charging it. So, we, I have been a big supporter of a bill to, to encourage generics to come into the market, to help come into the market, and, this isn't working entirely, and it hasn't been asked yet, but I will mention that one, I, the USMCA, which is NAFTA 2.0, we're getting a little far afield here, has a provision in it that would cause the increases in prescription drug prices to be maintained. And I'm, I'm currently opposed to it in its present form because of that. So I am doing everything I possibly can in Congress to fight Big Pharma. I don't take corporate PAC money, as a lot of you may know. One of my major reasons for that, one of my major reasons for that is because of the influence of the pharmaceutical lobby on members of Congress. There are two pharmaceutical lobbyists for every member of Congress. And when we did a letter to the U.S. Trade Representative about this USMCA, NAFTA 2.0, what's the matter, what am I doing wrong? Is that, okay. All right, got it, got it, okay. I'm going to walk down here a little so the people in the back don't feel neglected, but...
The further you go away from there...
I guess I'm not allowed to do that. Okay, sorry, everybody. We should do a dry run, like a, you know, dress rehearsal beforehand, but, so, I am doing everything that I possibly can, including not taking phone calls from pharmaceutical companies or pharmaceutical lobbyists. They call our office, even though I don't take their money, and try to lobby us, and I can only imagine the influence that they have on people who do accept their money. So, it's an issue that I'm very much aware of, very committed to bringing down the cost of prescription drugs across the board, and insulin is right at the top of that list.
Okay, we have two questions that are very similar, and it's a topic that you've kind of dealt with already, but it's about the children at the border and the problems of the loopholes in immigration, and what's the plan for, to solve all of this, I guess?
So I've touched on it, but I haven't stated what I really think the big issue is, which is that we need a comprehensive plan for immigration reform. We have got to take the politicization, I hope I said that right, out of the immigration issue. This has become a partisan issue, and it shouldn't be. This country was founded by immigrants, this country is based on the principle of immigration, lawful, legal immigration. I do believe that we need safe and secure borders, but I also believe that we need, first of all, we've got a declining workforce, in case y'all didn't notice this, I talked about that before. We've got, we don't have enough employees for the jobs that we have to fill. So we need to be encouraging some people, we need to be encouraging people to come here, particularly in fields where they are most needed, in the sciences, in the STEM fields. And I think that we have to back off of this, of this political approach to it. This is not a Democratic issue or a Republican issue. The question was couched in the issue of the children at the border. Let me just say loud and clear, I am completely, 100% opposed to family separation, and I think that we have to, we have to unify those families immediately. I, I am not suggesting that everybody should be let into the country, I'm suggesting that those people must be unified with their children.
We're kind of running out of time, but we still have a few more questions. This person, and I have to agree with this person, "I am very concerned about the national debt. What is being done to bring it under control?"
If you can solve that, I'm voting you for president.
Yeah, well, let me, let me tell you what my number one issue is with, with our current debt, and that is that we are producing less and less revenue, and that is because we are, we have eliminated certain taxes that contribute to our revenue stream. The 1% in this country are doing very, very well. The stock market is doing very, very well, and that's great as long as you have stocks. But if you don't, if you live paycheck to paycheck, which a lot of people in this district do, you're being hurt. One of the things that I did was introduce a bill to reinstate some of the middle-class tax deductions for people who work, who have to provide supplies for work, whether it's work boots, tools, teacher supplies. Those used to be deductible on your income tax returns, guess what? They're not, under the tax bill that was passed in December of 2017. And yet, corporations got a tax break, the top 1% got a tax break, the estate tax was completely eliminated. We need more revenues coming into this country, because yes, we do provide a lot of services, and it's one of the things that this country, that people that live here enjoy, but we have to pay for them. And so we, you know, people always talk about cutting programs, they talk about cutting Medicare and Social Security, or as Paul Ryan used to like to call them, entitlement reform. What we really need to be thinking about is why aren't we bringing more money into the, into the coffers of this country by taxing the people and the corporations that should be taxed?
Next, your feelings on Gulf War illnesses and how we can help our veterans that are suffering because of them?
So one of my very good friends in Congress is Chrissy Houlihan, she's another one of the women who was elected from Pennsylvania in November, and she is herself a veteran, she's on the Veterans Committee and the Armed Services Committee. We talk about veterans' issues all the time. I'm a daughter of a military man, I grew up in a military family, we moved every two years pretty much my entire life, so I have a very healthy respect for the military and all branches of it, as well as for veterans. And I think that when, when we treat veterans the way unfortunately we do in this country, which is not as well as they should be treated, it's the same as the 9/11 emergency responders who went into burning buildings and, and have since been dying of cancers related to that. Why we don't take care of the people who take care of us is beyond me, and we absolutely, that has to be a top priority.
In light of this recent Supreme Court hearing, or ruling, on gerrymandering, what can Congress do to stop this terrible practice?
So that Supreme Court decision just came down, and just for those of you who aren't aware of it, in Pennsylvania, we had redistricting that was ordered by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. Other states' Supreme Courts or highest courts have not necessarily ruled against gerrymandering, and the U.S. Supreme Court refused to take those cases up. So those states that have gerrymandered districts are pretty much stuck with them. So that decision literally just came down, and there are some discussions going on right now about a legislative fix to that, but it's very difficult because there is a respect of the constitutional differences between what you can do at the federal level and what you can do at the state level. And I don't know whether we're going to be able to do anything at the federal level on, on gerrymandering.
Okay, now this one, we're going to put you on the spot, because, if you haven't already, but this person wants to know, "What's your plan for 2020?" So if you haven't officially, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's time.
So if the question is, "Am I running for reelection?", the answer is yes. Thank you. I assume you're not asking me who I'm voting for for president, because I don't have the faintest idea. And, you know, my plan, I, as I told you before, I like this job very, very much, I don't think it's a two-year job, I think it's the kind of job that takes probably two years to really get into a groove and, and be able to introduce bills that are meaningful to you and your district, and to see them through to conclusion. So yes, I am running for reelection. Thank you.
Are we out of time, or we, we are out of time? There is just a couple of questions left, but since we're out of time, one of the key things that I think you should say, somebody wants to know, if they come to visit you in Washington, how should they go about it, and how do they get a tour?
Okay, so, a couple of things. First of all, poor Rebecca. Rebecca is standing back there, right next to the guy with the camera. Rebecca is the official scheduler, as well as being a legislative aide. She's in Washington most of the time, and all scheduling goes through Rebecca, because we determined that it makes sense to have one master calendar, and she's an ace at it, and all you have to do is call her or email her, and she will get back to you. And we may not be able to schedule a meeting right away, but we will get one scheduled as quickly as we can. We also have what we call power hours in our district offices in both Allentown and Easton, and we'll be opening an office in Stroudsburg very soon, we'll have one up there, too. And when I'm here, so just, a lot of people don't know what Congress's schedule is. We spend all of our weekdays in Washington, with the exception of one week a month, we come back to our respective districts, and we work in our districts. They call it recess, I don't like that term, because we're not actually at recess, we are working, but we're home in our districts. I am home most weekends, attending events, I'm home one week out of every month, and we schedule meetings in either the Allentown or Easton or Stroudsburg office, and if you call Rebecca, she will help you set something up. And just today, I had a series of meetings with constituents who came to see me on very varied issues, ranging from things that the United Way is doing, to requests by some guys from the Rod and Gun Club about dam, getting rid of some dams, I mean, so we cover pretty much everything in our meetings.
You had a damn nice day, then, all right. Okay, well, I guess, we want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and if we didn't particularly get to your question, please, see Susan, see one of her staff, they will definitely answer the question for you. We tried to get as many as we could get in here, and right now, I think we should give Susan a round of applause for tonight.
Thank you. Let me just, let me just end by saying the same thing I did at the beginning, which is, I really appreciate you coming out, especially on a, it turned out to be a nice night, but it didn't look so good when you were leaving your homes. I, it really means a lot to me to hear from all of you, so that I get a sense of whether I am doing things right, doing things wrong, what your opinions are, and, and the things that really matter to you. So thank you so very much, I appreciate it.